Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council Meeting of September, uh, let's see, I better put the glass on, eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. And could we please stand for the invocation? And at this time, I would like Pastor Francisco Vasquez from Family Vision Church to come forward for the opening, uh, for the invocation.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Uh, gracias por el privilegio de permitirme orar.
I thank you for the privilege of allowing me to pray tonight.
Y en el nombre de Visión Familiar les agradezco a cada uno de ustedes.
And in the name of Family Vision Church, I would like to thank each and every one of you.
Por la atmósfera espiritual de nuestra ciudad.
For the spiritual atmosphere of our, our city.
Eh, es una atmósfera de paz.
An atmosphere of peace.
De seguridad.
Security.
Gracias por el buen trabajo que se ha estado haciendo en la ciudad.
Thank you for the great job that's been done in our city.
En todos los aspectos.
In every aspect.
Con todo mi corazón se los agradezco.
With all of my heart, I thank you, all of you.
Amado Dios, te doy muchas gracias por esta tarde.
Beloved God, we thank you for this evening.
Tu hijo amado murió en la cruz y derramó su sangre.
Your beloved son died on the cross, shed his blood.
Y de sus, y sus pies fueron clavados al madero.
And his feet were nailed to that cross.
Esos pies que caminaban a la perfecta voluntad tuya.
Those feet that would walk towards your perfect purpose.
Y esa sangre nos enseña que puede haber un acuerdo.
That blood demonstrates to us there can be an accord.
En la multitud de ancianos.
In the multitude of leaders.
Amado Dios, te pido que tu Santo Espíritu.
I pray, Lord, that your Holy Spirit.
Dirija esta noche la reunión.
Will direct this council meeting.
Y que pueda llegar a un acuerdo sin muchos conflictos.
That an accord can be reached without much conflict.
Que tu Santo Espíritu se mueva en esta atmósfera.
That your Holy Spirit will move in this atmosphere.
Mira que, yo solamente te represento a ti.
I'm simply your representative, Lord.
Ellos te dan la bienvenida, amado Dios.
And they welcome you here, beloved God.
Y tu palabra dice.
And your word says.
Que bendito el pueblo que sabe darte tu lugar.
Blessed is the nation who trusts in the Lord.
Bendigo esta preciosa nación.
I bless this beautiful nation.
Este estado.
This state.
Este condado.
This county.
Y esta preciosa ciudad.
And our beautiful city.
Y a sus gobernantes.
And its governors.
Los bendigo en el nombre de nuestro Señor Jesucristo.
I bless it in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ.
Y los bendigo esta reunión que va a comenzar.
And I bless this council meeting that is about to begin.
En el nombre de Jesús.
In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, good evening, everyone. I am Pastor Francisco Vasquez's, uh, son, Francisco Vasquez's Junior. I've had the privilege of, uh, knowing quite a few of you here, and, uh, I'm his interpreter at our church, as well as a former volunteer for the city of Los Banos. Uh, I know, uh, Chief Hurley, um, and just a citizen of Los Banos. I just, I love this city with all my heart. I've served it, and I will continue to do so. And I just thank you guys for this opportunity. Really, it's a great honor to be here. So, yeah.
Well, thank you, Father and Son.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting of September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. And Commander Haddon, would you lead us in the flag, please?
Would you lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Okay. Let's go to Director Maloney for roll call, please.
For Ria?
Here.
Johnson Santos Jones.
President.
Louis Walata?
Here. We do have a quorum. Well, tonight is a little bit different because we'd, uh, like you to consider adding an agenda item. And so I'm going to go, it's, it's kind of detailed of what I need to do. We've done this before, but, uh, we have to go through this, uh, this entirely. And it's a recommendation to place the M C A G twenty twenty R tip on the agenda for discussion and direction to the mayor. Recommendation. My motion made a determinate, by motion made a determination that there is immediate need to take action on two that need arose after posting of the agenda receipt of M C A G agenda after city's agenda had been distributed. The matter may be placed on the agenda for consideration pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five four point two subsection B. Background. The Brown Act generally prohibits any action or discussion of items not on the posted agenda. However, there are three specific situations in which a legislative body can act on the item, uh, not on the agenda. Number one, when a majority decides that there is an emergency situation as defined for emergency meetings. And don't get all scared. This is, you know, the town's not falling in, so don't worry. So, number two, when two-thirds of the members present or all members, if less than two-thirds are present, determine that there is a need or immediate action and take need to take action, came to the attention of the local agencies subsequent to the agenda being posted. This exception requires a degree of urgency. Further, an item cannot be considered under the provision if the legislative body or staff knew about the need to take immediate action before the agenda was posted. A new need does not arise because staff forgot to put an item on the agenda or because an applicant missed a deadline, and that is not the case tonight. And three, when an item appeared on the agenda of and was continued from a meeting held not more than five days earlier. Discussion. Staff has been monitoring the M C A G staff recommendation on the draft twenty twenty R tip, which significantly affects the city's Pioneer Road widening project. The M C, the M C A G will be considering an agenda item related to the twenty twenty R tip at its September nineteenth meeting tomorrow. Staff received the M C A G agenda after the city council agenda and packet had been distributed. Staff believes that there is a need for immediate action, direction to the city's representative of the M C A G board, and the need to take action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the M C A G agenda being posted. So we are going to have a separate action, if, uh, if so pleases the board, to add the agenda item Pioneer Road Widening Project inclusion of the Regional Transportation Impact Program, R tip. And we need a super majority or a four-fifths vote to add this. So, so shall the, uh, the board say, or the, the city council. And I need a recommendation for that, or, and, yes. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, per the information you have read, specifically to the council, adding the, um, Pioneer Widening Project inclusion from the Regional Transportation Impact Program, uh, being that the agenda was received after the seventy-two hour posting of the city council agenda, I make a motion that we include this agenda item on our regular agenda tonight.
Mrs. Johnson Santos?
A second?
Okay, it's been motion by Louis, second by Johnson Santos, to add this agenda, and it will be the new twelve on the agenda. And then we'll move everything else down if it, if it is approved. So, uh, twelve was advisement of public notices, and the new agenda item will be the agenda item that Mrs. Lewis just read. So can I have a roll call vote, please, Director Maloney?
For Ria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Louis Walata?
Yes, the agenda item will be added. Now can I have on item four consideration of approval of agenda with this added item? Okay, let's go to Mr. Jones?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was the one from the last time.
Oh, okay. Just motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, motion to approve it.
Okay, okay. Ms., Mr. Freya?
Second.
Okay, motion by Jones, second by Freya, sorry, Mr. Jones, to approve the agenda stated with the inclusion of the new item twelve, moving everything else down one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
None.
Carry. Thank you, council. Okay, let's go on to public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action may be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. And at this time, uh, if you have a cellphone, please, uh, turn them off or place them on vibrate. And is there anyone else? Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? Please come forward. Hang on here. And, start.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is John Kates, and tonight I am here as the president of the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. And just a short, uh, little, uh, expression of gratitude towards, uh, Chief Breezy and the Los Banos Police Department. We had a very successful, uh, Fall Street Fair this last Saturday, and, uh, I made a, uh, I'm stuck on the far end because I'm actually playing music and helping the dance studios do their performances throughout the day. But I did make a, a, a brief notice that there was quite a police officer presence, which, um, I haven't seen before. And I thought that that was fantastic. I actually shook the hands of a couple of officers that were around the, uh, the intersection there at, uh, I, or Jane Sixth Street, and it, it was just, um, it was, it was just a great sense of, uh, security, even more so than having our vital volunteers out there. And, uh, I just wanted, uh, tonight just to do a brief thank you to Chief Breezy and the officers that were out there in a sweltering hundred and thirty-eight degree temperatures, keeping us safe. Uh, certainly the vital team is out there on a regular basis whenever we have, um, a street fair or any of our public events. And, uh, and they do provide some sense of safety, but to see, um, uniformed officers out there, um, Commander Haddon, if you could get that back to Chief Breezy, that would be great. And, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you all for your support of the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, uh, on an ongoing effort. I continue to try as the president to, uh, build up our partnership even more, and I look forward to, uh, more successes together. But that, that's pretty much all I've got to say tonight. Um, just a quick reminder, and we'll have more details as we get closer to the date, but October twelfth is our, I believe, eighth annual Los Banos Tomato Festival. And, uh, if you have any questions regarding that or anything relative to the Chamber of Commerce, please feel free to contact our executive director, Michelle Sandoval, at our chamber office, uh, at any time during regular business hours. At any rate, thank you all very much, and again.
Tell them about Farm to Table.
What's that?
Farm to Table tomorrow night.
Farm to Table is the downtown association, but yes, we're having that as well. So, looking forward to that. Um, anyway, thank you very much, and, uh, hope you guys have a good night.
Thank you, John. Yes. Hi, Kyle.
Sir, how you doing?
Good.
He, you're in, mayor, council. Kyle Loretto with Republic Services. Um, just here to, uh, remind everyone that this Saturday is the Los Banos, uh, Fall Cleanup. Uh, it's going to be at the, uh, fairgrounds at Fourth and F Street. And some of the items that people can get rid of are bulky items that don't fit your normal trash can or green waste. Um, some of those things are mattresses, tires, electronic waste, uh, refrigerators, uh, appliances. Uh, and this year, um, we've included, uh, uh, carpeting. So wall-to-wall carpeting, if anyone's removing carpeting, um, there's an organization that, uh, does recycle that, and they're going to be out there this, this, uh, this Saturday. So, um, I want to remind, uh, residents that they can, uh, bring in their materials and, uh, come see us and hopefully help clean up, uh, Los Banos some.
Okay. Do we have someone out there that's going to flag how the traffic's going to line up?
Yes, there'll be staff out there that, that help direct folks, um, and to our trucks and to the various, um, contractors that we use to, that collect our metals and electronics and those materials.
What about on the street?
On the streets, um, I'll have to check with our operations, but, uh, we'll make sure there are, uh, signs out there and folks making sure that, uh, people are going in the right direction.
Because the line gets kind of long sometimes, and.
It's very long.
And it's, it's, it's a well-attended event. I mean, we thank you, we thank M C A G for providing the partnership that you guys have, but, uh, but, and tra, and traffic control is always real good. So, thank you.
Great, great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So anyone who wishes to speak, anyone else who wishes to speak to public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and bring it back to council level, and we will go on to item six, consideration approval consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers two one seven nine zero nine through two one eight zero nine eight in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and five dollars and twenty-four cents. Minutes for the September fourth, two thousand nineteen city council meeting. Minutes for the September fifth, two thousand nineteen adjourned city council meeting. City Council Resolution number six one two seven, accepting grant deed for right-of-way dedication of approximately seven thousand square feet of land at the, and it should state northeast corner of Second Street and H Street for public sidewalk and pedestrian purposes in connection with the rail trail. City Council Resolution number six one two eight, authorizing a word of construction contract to Rolfe Construction Company in the amount of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars with a ten percent contingency in the amount of fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the Eighth and Ninth Street waterline construction project. City Council Resolution number six one two nine, accepting the Idaho Avenue Waterline Replacement Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item D.
D? Okay. Any other items from any other council members? Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item D? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to make a. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item D.
Okay, do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos to approve the consent agenda minus item D. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for perhaps maybe a point of correction. When I read the packet earlier this evening, I did question that side of the street, but in exhibit A, the legal description of the parcel for the city of Los Banos, signed off by licensed supervisor, it still says southeast corner. So does that have to be corrected as well?
Okay, the land, it has northeast on it and then southeast is crossed off on the item.
We're talking about in the agenda packet?
Yes.
Exhibit A.
Oh, the packet itself, not the actual item?
What you're looking at is the resolution that was given us tonight, correct it. But there's an exhibit A and perhaps our attorney or Mrs. Elms can answer this question.
Okay.
The second paragraph speaks of the description of the parcel, but it still refers to the southeastern corner.
Okay, Mr. Faison's going to answer that.
Yeah, I'm just reviewing it now. I don't think it's referring to the southwestern corner, I think it's referring to the southeastern line of Second Street, if you read it. So I think the description is correct, it's not referring to that corner.
So the corner and lines are not synonymous?
No, it's not. It's the line of the right-of-way on the street.
Okay.
And I will check it to make sure before it records, but I believe that's correct.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure because that had been stamped and signed by a licensed surveyor.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Other than that?
You want to make a motion, Mrs. Lewis?
I'll make a motion to approve item D in the consent agenda as submitted and our public works director will check to make sure everything's okay.
Okay, it's resolution number six one two seven. Do I have a second? Mr. Faria?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Faria to approve item D in the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item seven, consideration to approval of city council resolution number six one three zero, accepting the police facilities needs assessment report prepared by Indigo Hammond. And is that Plowley Architects? Play? Huh?
Play.
Oh, yeah. I've seen that, okay. Architects, L L P. Okay? And we're going to go to whom for this? Mr. Faison, go ahead.
Yeah, tonight my assistant, public works director, Greg Pimentel, will be presenting the staff report. Thank you.
Hi, Greg.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. The report before you this evening is an assessment of the current and future needs of police services in the city of Los Banos. Nearly a year ago, the services of Indigo Hammond and Playle Architects was enlisted to prepare the study. The assessment included sheltering services provided for animals in our community. Once enlisted, Indigo initiated the project by collecting relevant data, interviewing police staff at every level in the department, and calculating existing space functions. City staff toured other police facilities in central California with Indigo, looking at their operational strategies and structures. Indigo conducted planning meetings with our management staff, two community meetings, and one joint city council planning commission meeting to address concerns and receive input from city leaders, businesses, and residents alike. The result has been compiled into a comprehensive police facility study which has been attached to your staff report. The police facility study has focused on the need primarily to consolidate services into one facility or building. The site plan, floor plans, and conceptual model of a police department building were configured using land on G Street, which is adjacent to the Filasco Justice Center and across the street from the city's Public Works Maintenance Yard. The site plan, floor plans, and conceptual model for an animal shelter were designed based on our present and future needs as well. However, a location for a new animal shelter is yet to be determined. The study does provide a list of improvements at the current animal shelter, which could be added to improve services until we are able to find land and funding for a new facility at a future date. If you approve this police facilities needs assessment study this evening, the next steps are to complete the purchase of the property. It's currently being cleaned up and once that's done, we hope to final the sale and purchase. Identify the funding to build a new police headquarters, enlist a firm to design the building plans, and enlist a contractor to build our building, our new police facility. Mr. Bruce Playle, principal architect with Indigo, is here this evening and I would like for him just to take a minute or two to offer additional highlights in the report or of the report. Bruce?
Thank you, Greg, and thank you for having me this evening and your consideration of the report. Let me just first say it's been a real pleasure to work with you and as well as city staff and the community over the last, well, year, in community meetings that were conducted in January, June, and most recently in August. And I think that the city has embarked in a very logical process and has had the patience to go through the study. And I think we've come up with the right solution for your future for community police services and also for animal shelter needs. And I guess I might say that the G Street site seems next to perfect for location for your police facility. It's already got government center facilities on it with the county occupying part of the site. There's other future governmental services that might be considered for that general location. And it's relatively central in the middle third, let's say, of the city, which is good just for vehicle movements in general. I think our goal, I won't go through the floor plan room by room, that's not necessary, but just to give you an idea of the architectural treatment of the building, we've come up with a design that I believe is very functional for police operations. It is very practical inasmuch as it uses durable and low-maintenance materials, so that'll help down the road. And also, the main spirit of the building is it's intended to be welcoming to the community and it's meant to be very practical. It's not a fancy pants building by any stretch of the imagination. It's civic, you know, quality construction is the way I would put it. And I think if you've looked at the, even if you just read the front page of the report and hopefully you've delved into it further, and I am here also to answer any questions that you might have tonight, but this rendering shows that the building, I would say it looks like it's a good fit for Los Banos. In fact, it looks like it's been there forever, if I might put it that way. So we're very pleased that we could come up with a solution that, and I'd be eager to get your opinion on it as well for going forward. For the animal shelter side of things, we've identified that you probably need a minimum of two acres for a proper new animal shelter. And we would recommend that as you can do it, you begin some kind of a search or as opportunities arise to look for a site and seize it or set it aside for an animal shelter in the future. Probably its principal characteristic should be you don't want it next to residential neighbors. Other than that, it could sort of be anywhere in your community. So I would encourage you to think about that. And in the meantime, we have some practical improvements for the existing shelter to begin to implement shelter medicine best practices. For example, the first priority and one of the tenants of shelter medicine best practices is a separation of the species, canine and feline. So basically having a modular that could be added that would be housing your cats would be an easy first step and to separate that facility from the dogs. Other than that, we have other plans presented for a new shelter that you might find or put on the site to be found. It requires more funding down the road in the future. So again, thank you again for the opportunity to prepare this work for you and we would look forward to any opportunities to carry it forward in the future that may arise and we're at your service. So I'll turn it back to Greg and then if you do have any questions of the work, I'd be happy to provide answers.
So, you know, we're very appreciative. We saw the two buildings in the workshop that was held recently. And so we're very pleased with what's happening. And just so the public knows, we have a save rate of about eighty-seven percent on dogs and cats, which is very high for the kind of archaic facility that we have. And just think how much more we could do with a new facility. But the animal shelter portion, I can't remember, how many million was it? Do you remember off the top?
I can answer that for you. The, a new facility would be eight point six million.
Eight point six million, yeah, yeah. And so this city has made do with very little and we have a high save rate for animals and we should, and all the volunteers and all the city staff and everyone together has, they've done a phenomenal job. So I'm looking forward to the day we can open this new animal shelter and the police department because it's, both are so needed. So let's continue to work on that and we appreciate it. Council, do you have any questions? Is there anything you'd like to add? Mr. Faria?
Just want to say thank you and I'm very pleased to see us moving forward in this very methodical and careful way so that we're going to get a really nice facility that serves our community well. And I'm very pleased to see us proceeding staff and our architect and our police.
Very good, you're very welcome. Thank you. Anyone else, council? All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Greg, you want to close?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I wanted to kind of follow up and say one more thing about the, our animal shelter. As you noted, that we do have a good turnover rate and Indigo works with the University of Davis and they brought in a doctor of veterinary medicine who analyzed and went out to the site and looked at the conditions that we have and looked and analyzed the data for our animal placement and things like that. And the comment I remember the most is she was very impressed with our ability, as you stated, to be able to provide the services we do under the restraints or under the ability that we currently have. So I thought that was a great comment and a great testament to the folks that are working out there and everybody that's trying to make animals safe. So that concludes the report. If there's no further questions, we'll yield the floor back to the council and ask for your acceptance of the police facility study.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Jones?
Yes, I moved to adopt the resolution as submitted.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Jones, second by Lewis to adopt city council resolution six one three zero as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item eight, Peninsula Clean Energy Presentation Regarding the Billy Wright Solar Project. Okay?
Hello.
All right, hang on. Let's see, I have to count to three here, wait a minute. Okay, one, two. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Honorable mayor and council, thank you for having us here today to present to you. I'm Jan Pepper, the CEO of Peninsula Clean Energy. This is Rick Bonilla, council member from the city of San Mateo and one of our twenty-two board members. And we also have with us here tonight Joe Weedman, our director of regulatory and legislative affairs, and Shayna Barnes, our administrative assistant. So we're happy to be here and to talk to you about community choice energy. So first I wanted to just give you a brief overview of what Peninsula Clean Energy is and what community choice energy is. We are the official electricity provider for San Mateo County and we provide the county with cleaner and greener energy at lower rates. And the way it works is that we source the electricity for all of the residents and businesses in San Mateo County. PG&E still delivers that energy over their lines, they still do the billing, and the customers end up benefiting with cleaner energy at lower rates. Community Choice Energy came about as a result of a bill that was passed in the assembly a number of years ago shortly after the energy crisis in two thousand two or two thousand four, which allows jurisdictions, cities and counties, to choose an alternative electricity provider for their energy so that they can have what they want, so that what, the energy that's being provided to them meets the needs of their community. The first community choice energy program was started in Marin County with Marin Clean Energy, although actually before that, the Kings County Conservation District tried to start a community choice energy program here in the Central Valley and PG&E lobbied very aggressively against it and killed it. So since that time, additional legislation has been passed that does not allow PG&E or other investor-owned utilities to lobby against communities choosing to move forward with a community choice energy program. Our program was the fifth adopted in the state. We started in two thousand sixteen and have been operating now, serving all of our customers for a little over two years. So many things stay the same with community choice energy. The discounts that PG&E provides for residents such as their care program, medical baseline, and other types of discount programs continue, so people continue to get those discounts. Energy efficiency programs are still offered by PG&E. They still maintain the power lines, reliability is the same, and if the power goes off, you still call PG&E and ask them to come out and fix the lines. So Community Choice Energy is a program that is spreading throughout the state of California and this map shows where CCAs, as we call them, have been formed. So the green areas are the counties that have actually adopted and have implemented community choice energy programs. The red areas are ones where the local agency has decided to move forward but has not yet implemented it. And then the hatched areas are other areas that are looking at it. And so we are here in Merced County to talk about it because we have, we are in the process of having a two hundred megawatt solar project built not very far from here, and I'll give you more information about that. So for Peninsula Clean Energy, we offer two products to our customers. And the Eco Plus product is the default product. Once a community decides that they want to implement community choice energy and the city council votes to do it, then all of the customers, all of the businesses and residents are automatically enrolled in the program. If they choose not to be in the program, they can opt out and stay with PG&E. Our default product is five percent below PG&E in cost and it's a superior product in terms of having higher renewable energy content, higher greenhouse gas-free content, and overall better. And we also offer a one hundred percent renewable product for people who would like to choose that. So we have about three hundred thousand accounts in San Mateo County. Five thousand of those accounts have opted up to the one hundred percent renewable product and ninety-seven point six percent of our residents and businesses have stayed with us. So they're very pleased that we're there. We've also achieved an investment-grade credit rating because we've been able to be very financially conservative and financially conservative and have a lot of reserves, and, and I'll talk about that in a moment, too. So the benefit to our community, because we are offering this product at five percent below PG&E's rates, we're saving our residents and businesses eighteen point three million dollars annually in money that they are no longer paying to PG&E. And we're also reducing the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that are going into the air by the amount of 515 million pounds annually, which is equivalent to taking 50,000 cars off the road for one year. So one of the things that we do to source our electricity is we are in the process of building new renewable energy power plants to serve our customers. And we broke ground almost a year ago on the Wright Solar Project, which is just off of Billy Wright Road near, near Los Banos. And Mayor Valalta was there at our, our groundbreaking. And that project is under construction right now. In fact, before we came here today, we went over there and, and saw it, and it covers thousands of acres. They're going to be installing, I think, forty-five thousand solar panels. There's a parking lot filled with people who are working there to, to build that project, and it's really quite amazing. And the power that will be generated by that project is enough to power seventy-five thousand households. And we are very, Councilmember Bonilla is very much a labor-related person. So one of the things that we made sure on that project was that there was a project labor agreement so that the workers who were working on the project were being paid good wages and that the construction was being done in a quality manner. And this is an article that was in, I think, the Operating Engineers? Is that where this?
Yes.
Newsletter talking about the building of this project. And we have a short video that we'd like to show. Someone knows how to make it happen. Okay. Thank you.
Energy doing a project labor agreement on this work is monumental.
Peninsula Clean Energy, the official electricity provider for San Mateo County, provides cleaner electricity at lower rates for 290,000 businesses and households. Wright Solar is a 200-megawatt utility-scale project located in Los Banos, California.
My name is Rick Bonilla, and I'm a member of the board of Peninsula Clean Energy. I really love the fact that this project is being built under an all-union project labor agreement. I'm very proud of it myself, as a retired union carpenter, as a member of the board now, that I'm able to help shape an entity that's going to be using skilled, trained professionals.
Under the terms of Peninsula Clean Energy's workforce policy, Wright Solar is being built under a five-union project labor agreement between operating engineers, laborers, ironworkers, carpenters, and electricians.
It's a set of guidelines for our contractors. It's work opportunities for my members, and it's great.
Job means a lot to me. I mean, it's a great project for a lot of people, and there's a lot of people that are going to be on the project, many different trades that'll be involved. And it's a clean energy project that's going to help out a lot of people and keep from using fossil fuels to produce energy. Two winters ago, I was having to stay in a hotel two or three hours away from home just to try to keep work. And this project right here, working this time of year, is really helping out because it's somewhere I get to go home every single night, and I get to spend time with my family.
What this job means for me and my family is, is, first of all, is that I get a chance to go home, which is a rarity sometimes. The nature of our work requires us to, to travel wherever the work's at. So when we have local projects like this, it's very important for the families that are home supporting us, my wife, my children, that I be able to be there, and that's kind of a godsend for us.
I think it's wonderful. I, I have a, a solar on my own home, and I believe in green solar technology for sure because what it's doing is it's, it's cleaning up our environment. It allows for folks in the, around the area to get clean electricity, and, and it's a, it's a wonderful process.
Clean energy is, seems very beneficial. There's a, it's a feel-good project where we can work with environmental, we can work with industry, and everybody seems to be benefiting from that. Everybody wins on a project like that.
Thanks. Thank you for running that, the video. Just gives you an idea of folks who are working out there on that project. So, so what does it mean? What is, what are the advantages of having Community Choice Energy? For us in San Mateo County, we have specific goals to try to electrify our overall environment. In San Mateo County, the, the greatest amount of greenhouse gas emissions are from transportation. So we're now producing clean electricity, and we're trying to help people to transition from their gasally empowered cars to electric vehicles, electric buses, and things like that to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions in San Mateo County. So those are the priorities that our communities have set for us. And after two and a half years of operation, the net position that we have for, for this organization is 142 million dollars. We've been able to be financially conservative, and one of our reserve policies is to keep 120 days cash on hand. And as I said, we've been able to get an investment-grade credit rating, which allows us to contract for power at lower rates. So that's certainly something that, that we're interested in, and that's what the, the board members from San Mateo County have, have made a priority. For Los Banos, if you were to decide to move forward with Community Choice Energy program, you would have the ability to structure the program to best fit the needs of your community. You know, there's the possibility of having lower rates with a five percent discount like us. You could choose to have a larger discount for your customers and, you know, and decide what, how you want to have the excess earnings generated or reinvested back into your community. You may be interested in economic development and putting together programs like that or having specific rates that would encourage more investment in your community. So it's, because it's community choice, the emphasis is on the word "community," you decide what is important to you, and any excess revenues, you decide how those revenues are going to be reinvested in your community. Just a little background on how we started and what the timeline was for us. We started back in January of, of 2015 with a lot of study and due diligence and trying to learn about what Community Choice Energy was. And the county of San Mateo provided a loan for figuring out how to move forward. They, they loaned the organization $3 million, which we repaid after one year of operation. And we also got a loan from Barclays Bank for $12 million, which we also were able to repay after a year of operation. In October, from October to February of 2016, there were a lot of, of meetings. All of the different cities and towns in San Mateo County met and decided to form a joint powers agency, and that's the structure of Peninsula Clean Energy. It's a joint power agency. Each city is a member of that JPA, and the general funds of those cities are protected. Basically, there's a firewall between the, the general fund of the city and the JPA. So if we were to get into financial trouble, the cities would not be affected by that. We started our launch for enrolling our customers in March of 2016, and then from, from October 2016 through April of 2017, we enrolled all of our customers. And the laws require that we send out four different notices to every customer so that they know this is happening. And we also got all our contracts together. We started contracting for power. And so overall, the investment for getting Peninsula Clean Energy started was about, was a little over $2 million. If you were interested in, in starting, this is, I hope you can read this. I know that's a little, a little bit light, the green. But basically, you know, you would do your initial exploration and studying of, of what makes sense for you, you know, for the rest of this year. One of the items that you have in your packet is a couple of forms that would need to be sent to PG&E. So basically, you need to understand what your electric load is here. How much, how many kilowatt-hours do your residents and businesses use? How is it used throughout the year? You know, how, how does it look like? What does it look like in the summer? What's your air conditioning load doing to your load? What does it look like in the winter? And then study that and determine how, how Community Choice Energy might work. So that would involve doing a technical study, and we, we are offering to cost-share that study with you. And then, once you get the results of that technical study, then you would make a decision if you wanted to proceed. Do you want to make your own JPA, form your own JPAs, go forward as your own individual city, join an existing CCA like Peninsula Clean Energy? And then, once you make that decision, you would submit an implementation plan to the Public Utilities Commission in order to, the way the timing works, if you submitted that implementation plan by the end of next year, you could start at the beginning of 2022 there. So a year lag, and then your program would start in 2022. So we have, we've talked to the mayor about this and the city attorney, actually. And we've also met with a number of the other cities in Merced County and with the county supervisors to just let everyone know what, what it's all about. In Los Banos, I know there's some interest in getting the power from that Wright Solar Project because it's just in your backyard. There's the opportunity to add local jobs and to generate additional income for Los Banos to stay, to stay in this, this town. We also believe that your energy use here in Los Banos would likely be pretty complementary to the energy use in San Mateo County because the weather is, is different. And so the, you probably use more electricity in the summertime because you have higher temperatures here. The solar is producing at its maximum in the summertime because the sun's out for a longer period of time. And then in the winter, it would complement what, what our load is, which actually is higher in the winter because of, of lighting. So the, the first step, as I mentioned, would be to submit this, these forms to PG&E, this electric form that are in the packet that we, that we provided to you, and then to do a feasibility study. And PCE would, would be happy to cost-share the cost of that feasibility study with you so you could figure out whether it makes sense for you to do it, and then you can make a decision as to whether there's something, this is something you would like to proceed with. So we're here to answer any questions that you have. And I don't know if, Ricky, you want to add some, some comments based on being a member of the board and what, what all of that means?
I could, I could say a couple of words. So thank you very much. And thank you, mayor and council members, for having us here tonight. I am Rick Bonilla, a member of the board and a member of the San Mateo City Council. And like Jan's mentioned, we actually got started working on creating our program in 2015. And I actually started before that working on it. It was the middle of 2014 when I became aware of CCAs and what Marin County Clean Energy was doing. I went up there, I attended their board meeting. I stayed late, and I met their people, on their staff, and I said, "This is a great thing that you're doing here. Can you come down to San Mateo County and talk with our board of supervisors, our city council members, to help us try to get this thing kind of a program started?" And they says, "Yes, we can. We will do that. We'd love to see you get started and get into this business because it's a great way to cut carbon emissions and to help people improve situations where they live through the benefits of the program altogether." Being a member of the board is, we have a meeting once a month. It's a lot of work, there's some homework, but it's very meaningful. We're offering specialized programs right now because we know that transportation is one of our biggest sectors for greenhouse gas emissions. We're offering programs to help people buy electric vehicles. So to do that, we're reducing the barriers to that. We're offering free test drive situations where people can come to a parking lot, like at the Facebook campus or someplace similar, and we'll have different kinds of electric cars there for them to test drive. A lot of people have never ridden in one. Once they ride in it, they realize, wow, it's smooth, it's quiet, it has pickup, it's a nice car. So then they're more interested in looking at the other deal we're offering, which is where we're working with some dealers. I think we have a handful of dealers in the county we're working with who offer discounts because we bring a group of purchasers. So they're offering several thousand dollars discount. We tackled another thousand dollars to add to that discount. The state is still offering $5,000 rebates. It helps people get accustomed to and think about buying an electric car. The other barrier is people are concerned about the range of the electric car. So they want to know, well, where is all the charging for these things? We have actually formed a partnership, it was in the news about three weeks ago, with the California Energy Commission. Between our $12 million and their $12 million, we're going to be building, I think, several thousand, thirty-five hundred charging stations throughout our county, which is going to help reduce that barrier. There's going to be charging in parking lots, at church parking lots, on the public sites, at schools, at office buildings, in public parking garages, some even out on sidewalks where people can just park next to it and charge. So I'm very proud of this, as you can probably tell, and I could talk more, but I'm going to stop now and...
Are those pay charging stations?
Well, yeah, actually, there is a choice. And I'm talking with the city where I live, of San Mateo. If we really want to get people to use those products, get them to get an EV and get out there and take advantage of the clean energy, but also cut the carbon emissions, we should make those free. So that's one of the things I'm working on. I haven't quite run that by Jan yet. I can see the wheels turning there, but I think it's a good idea. Thanks.
Well, we'll, we'll still charge you for the electricity, but if your city wants to make it free for your residents, that's your choice.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Well, it, it, the reason I know about this is I went to, I was invited along with a, a number of supervisors and, and other elected officials, and they asked us to view the, and, and look at the, the groundbreaking of the, of the Wright Solar Farm, which is up on Billy Wright Road. And I, I, it's phenomenal what, what they're doing out there. So I asked just one question. How much of this power goes into the grid for our city? And they said, "Nothing." Said, it said, "All this power goes to San Mateo." And that made me mad because all of a sudden, we're the, the, the collector, we're the people that are loaning out all the land to, to, for the energy, and the energy's going over the hill. And, and, and I just kind of, it kind of made me mad for a few minutes, and, and then all of a sudden, they come back and they come to Merced County and Peninsula Clean Energy and says, "We have a plan for you." And so I'm, I'm very pleased that they're here to, to give us a presentation, and the council can do with this what they will. So anyone else want to say anything? Mr. Santos?
I just had a real point of clarification. I see on the Eco Plus, it says five percent less than PG&E rates, but the Eco 100 doesn't necessarily say that. But that five percent will go for both plans, correct?
No. The way we have it right now is the Eco 100 is one cent per kilowatt-hour more than the Eco Plus.
Okay.
So it's probably about five percent more than PG&E. Our overall plans, though, which I didn't talk about, is for us to get to 100% renewable energy by 2025 for everyone and have that be five, at least five percent less for everyone.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I could add a little to that. So I have a small, two-bedroom, one-bath house. My bill's about $3 a month more, and I have the 100% than it would be with PG&E.
Gotcha. Thank you.
But the other one is?
Less.
Five percent?
Yeah. Five percent less than PG&E's rates.
Okay.
Generation.
Mrs. Lewis?
Okay. Well, I was kind of asking a question in the same manner. With the five percent less, is that, is, is that what you offer the cities to give to their customers? They get directly five percent?
Yeah, the rate that we charge is five percent less. That's what we presented to the board, and that's what they approved. But if you were to do a program, you can do whatever you want. So if you wanted to have it be 10% less than PG&E or 15% less, provided the economics work out, which I, I think they do, we've looked at that, you could, you could do that instead.
So that means the city would have to pay more money to you to offer its customers?
No.
How, how does that work?
So PG&E still does the billing. So it's, it's not a tax. It's actually the rate that you pay for your bill. So right now, you pay PG&E whatever the rate is, 20 cents a kilowatt-hour, say, for, for your electricity. We take that rate, we, to figure out what our rates are, we take the rate, we reduce it by five percent, then we reduce, there's also some exit fees that people have to pay because PG&E had procured this power for our customers before, and so we have to pay them back for some of that power.
of that power. So that the net amount that a customer pays is 5% less, that comes to us rather than to PG&E. And it's just billed through the PG&E bill. All of the cities, all of the municipalities, you know, they also receive that 5% savings for all of their municipal accounts. So everyone gets that 5% savings. If you, as a jurisdiction, decide you want to do community choice energy, then you decide what your base product is going to be, what percentage renewable you want to have in it, what kind of pricing you want to have for that. And then that's what everyone would be automatically enrolled in, rather than what PG&E currently provides.
So most people who don't have solar systems generally don't look at their PG&E bill and kilowatts. You know, they look at the bottom line, what I pay.
Right.
So you've got, let's say, a $400 a month bill. 5% of that is only $20. That's not a heck of a lot of savings to any customer.
That's per month, so it adds up. I mean, it's not, it's not a lot, but it's, that's a decision we made for San Mateo County that 5% was enough to make it interesting for people. But if you wanted to do a program here, you can choose to have whatever that discount is that you want it to be.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Yeah. So let me explain something about the difference between what PG&E does with the money when you pay the bill and what we do. PG&E gets the money when you pay the bill and they have to give money to their shareholders. They give money to their public relations company. They give, they pay all sorts of things and then they pay their cost of the electricity that they're providing, right? They have to pay to generate that electricity. We don't have shareholders, we don't have an army of public relations people, we don't do TV commercials. So the difference between that 5% discount and what we pay for our energy is what we use to plow back into the community in form of the investment of those projects that we offer to the public. So we're offering to give discounts on cars, we're paying money for that. We're going to build charging stations all over the place, we're paying for that. This is the difference between. So all of the cities have somebody, we have 20 cities in the county, we each have one council member on the board. The board makes the decisions for the entity, Peninsula Clean Energy. So we decide what the programs are. We're going to be offering other programs too. Right now, these are just the ones, we've only been in business really for two and a half years, two and a half years.
So is San Mateo the only city in this particular program right now?
No, we have 20 cities. Every city in the county enrolled.
It's San Mateo County.
Within San Mateo County.
San Mateo County, yes.
Your county is the only county on this particular program right now?
Right now, we are.
Okay.
No, no. Did you see the map earlier with the red and the green and...
But it didn't say that, was that all of your companies? I thought those were other companies.
No, no, no. All those different entities in the green areas on that California map have formed their own joint powers authority to do the same thing we're doing.
Right, but they're not necessarily what your company, you said there are five other companies that are doing this throughout the state of California.
No, that was initially in the beginning. There were four, we became the fifth. Right now, there are 19, 19 other jurisdictions.
So the green area on the peninsula, is that all governed by your organization? Okay, that's what I'm trying to get you to say. It's not all their company. So that means other companies are providing energy to the green areas as well.
That's right.
So, okay. So, okay, getting away from the 5%. The other, one of the other questions I have is during the foggy season, I don't know that you're going to be producing as much energy as you do when we have the wonderful sunshine here in the valley. So how does that work?
So we have a forecast for how much power is going to be produced from the Wright Solar Project. So we contract with lots of different power producers to come up with the amount of energy that we need. So the Wright Solar Project, we've predicted will provide about 15% of the energy that we need to serve our customers. We've also, we're also in the process of building another project in Kings County, a 100-megawatt solar project there. We're negotiating with another entity and unlikely to sign a contract in a couple of months for a project in Fresno County. We've also contracted with some wind projects in the Altamont Pass, in Palm Springs. So we have, we have contracts with lots of different renewable energy projects throughout California and some in the Pacific Northwest in order to procure the power that we need. So, yeah, in the winter, the solar doesn't produce as much, so we contract for power from other types of resources. And we, you know, we look at how much power do we need each day, every year, and make sure that we've contracted for enough power for all of those customers.
Okay.
It's complicated.
Go ahead, go ahead. It is, it's very complicated. And I guess maybe as a layperson, I'm trying to make it simple for our public that's listening by looking at it via television and our people who we have here at the council chambers. Kind of getting back to your statement about, you know, the cars and all of that and putting up charging stations. Has there been any kind of decision already made that when a city comes on board, since you're pushing to get people into electric vehicles, to quickly install those kind of charging stations in those cities that join your organization? Because if you're just going to do it in the Bay Area and then you have cities here in the valley that have joined, but you're not giving them the service, then we're not receiving the full benefit of what your organization can offer.
Right, it's really, that's a good question and it's really up to you. So if electric vehicles and electric vehicle charging stations are something that you would like to see implemented here, then that is something that we could do here. If that's not your priority, if your priority is something else, then that's what would be implemented here. So we would not, you know, where we are, there's, you know, it's a different environment than here. So it really depends on what's important to your community.
Okay, so that decision would come from the community, not from your organization?
That's right, that's right. It would come from your community.
Okay. And then lastly, you may mention about a cost study that you would share in, you know, the cost of the analysis. But if a municipality, once you go through that, decides that they don't want to have this particular process or energy source in the community for this particular time, does that money have to be paid back to you? Or is that just money that you've given to have the study done?
No, it would not need to be paid back. We're offering to provide that.
Okay.
And the cost of a feasibility study, we've talked to our consultants, would be about $25,000. So we would be willing to, you know, we can discuss it, but we would probably be willing to pay $20,000 of that and maybe have you put $5,000 in. So we'd like, we'd want you to have some skin in the game so that you're actually invested in it. But I have the authority to spend the $20,000, I don't need to get his agreement for that.
It's good to be the CEO.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Do you like American Pickers and we can negotiate with you, we'll meet you in the half?
Yeah, we're willing to talk, yeah.
No, just kidding. Mr. Frey?
So you would be functioning as an electricity broker for the city or a liaison? I'm a little curious about how each role, your role, are you, you're not taking the place of PG&E or you are taking the place of PG&E?
We're taking the place of PG&E as far as sourcing the generation of the power. So we're not really a broker. It depends on how you want to move forward. As we've been talking to folks here in Merced County, one option is for you to join our organization because we've already paid a lot of the money, we've paid all the money to do the startup costs and you could avoid all of that. And we can just kind of meld you in with what we're doing. So we would just source the power, you know, increase the amount of power that we're sourcing to meet the electricity needs of your community. And basically, that's how it would be done.
All right. And then, technical question, the acreage on that Wright, it's 200 megawatts, is that what you said it is?
Yes.
That's a lot of juice. How many acres is that?
It's about 1,700.
1,700 acres?
Yes.
Okay, for 200 megawatts. Okay. And then, those panels, what do, do you know the expected life expectancy of those panels before they have to be replaced?
I imagine the warranty on the panels is probably 25 years. We don't own it, we're, another organization is building it and we've contracted to purchase all of the power from it. So if the project doesn't work, we don't pay. We only pay if power's being produced.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, do you have anything to do also? You purchase power from the, in San Antuela and that grid up there? Do you have anything to do with that one, up by the cemetery?
Um...
There's a big solar array there too.
Yeah, we're not involved with the project there.
Pardon me?
I was told that, that energy went to all San Antonio.
Oh, all right.
Okay. We are actually, there is a wind project up in the, by the San Luis Reservoir, and we actually have contracted to purchase the power from that project.
There's a lot of wind there.
Yeah.
I grew up in Tracy, in the Altamont, so...
Okay, you know about wind then. And we have a project in the Altamont that we're purchasing power from as well.
Very good, all right. So, and then one more question. Do you receive subsidies from, are there any government subsidies for you that you do this with or this is all your own independent work with your joint powers?
It's all ratepayers, there's no taxpayer funds.
No taxpayer funding on this at all? This is all ratepayers?
Right.
Right, so you all already are ratepayers, you pay PG&E. So rather than, so the part that you're paying PG&E for generation, which isn't broken out in your bill right now, you would instead pay to the community choice energy provider. So it's about 40% of the rate would be for generations, the other 60% or so is for their transmission and distribution and all the other...
All the other stuff.
Fees that are in there.
All right. So, and what you're offering us is a benefit of be able to bring money that ratepayers are paying rather than going to PG&E, coming back into our community to benefit how this, and the council would be the one to determine that?
Right, council would need to make the decision if you wanted to implement a community choice energy program.
Okay.
And if you decide to do that, then we would come up with a schedule for when that's going to happen and when your residents and businesses would be enrolled.
Okay, and then the council would decide how to handle that?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there are no more questions...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I might?
Yeah, go.
So what we're looking for tonight from the council is some...
I was just going to say that.
Some direction on how you would like to proceed. If there's an interest in proceeding, I do have some thoughts and a recommendation on how we might do that, if and when that's appropriate and whenever you'd like to hear that, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to hear it now.
So I'd suggest if there is an interest, we bring back an item for the council's consideration. There's a lot to look into. We're not, we didn't expect a decision, I don't think, from the council this evening. But we do need to look at the cost, the pros and cons, the sorts of programs we might implement. So I would say, give the staff some time to do that and we could bring back an item maybe in November for the council's consideration to possibly move forward. Again, if there's interest from the council to do that.
Mr. Frey, did you have another question?
No, I was going to make a motion to make a recommendation to pursue the research as described by the city manager.
All right, and I have two other lights on here. Mrs. Lewis, did you have a question?
Yes.
Go.
Yes. Being that there are four other programs out there, as a council member, I think it's frugal for us to know what program is the best program for the city if the city decides to go and do something like this. So I don't mind getting information, more detailed information on this, but I think it would be remiss for us to just make an obligation right off the bat without knowing what the other organizations offer out there.
Yeah, tonight is not an obligation.
Well, we need more information.
Right, right, right.
So we're obligating to get more information from this organization, but there are four other ones out there.
And we should find out if any other organizations are willing to come to our community. And then they can make a presentation if they're willing to come.
There's actually 19 other CCAs. So we've kind of, you know, because we're doing the project in Merced County, the other CCAs kind of stepped back because we're involved here and they're not. But, you know, we can provide whatever information. If you come up with a list of questions, we can certainly provide answers to those.
Okay, Alex, you can, it's part of the investigation.
I can see that happening because you have to, you want to develop this joint powers for a county to have this going on. But again, I don't feel comfortable in just having one organization give us this, even though they're trying to form, get this joint power. So it kind of puts us in a position of being there whether we want to or not, without hearing what other companies out there can offer us.
Santos?
Thank you, I was just going to say that I would definitely like to see where we go with this, but I hope that if we do come back, maybe there's, we've looked into some other ones and just see, but I would definitely like to see where we're going with this for myself, so that's it, I.
Mr. Frey?
I agree, and that was my intent, that research would involve, you know, everything that has to do with this sort of thing. Are there other companies? Are there other organizations? Or is this, or would this be the one we wish to pursue? But that, I would recommend be part of the, and I expect it to be, a part of the research idea on that. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with the rest of the council here, it's just, there's a lot of information that we still got to take in on this. One is, what's the total cost for the city or roughly, what's the city's investment into I mean, is there any other than the $5,000 skin in the game for the load data?
Um...
And then how long would this, how long would we be tied into this program?
Well, we can, we can share with you our joint powers agency agreement and you can look at that to understand what, in our CCA, what the JPA looks like and what the commitment is. But you want to...
Let me just, you're asking about cost. So we did put some money in our county, the county put some money upfront, and we secured a loan just to make sure we had credit for any costs we needed to establish ourselves. But as Jan mentioned, within two years, we paid back the county the money and we didn't even use all of the money that they had made available to us. And also, we had borrowed, didn't borrow, but we took credit from Barclays. We didn't even use all of that credit, we paid it all back within two years. So right now, the initial costs, which we have already done and you wouldn't have to, we've done it, we can, state law allows us to join you to our program.
To that existing...
Yes, right. Okay, so you wouldn't have to. The $5,000 that I think we're talking about, basically just to get the load data from PG&E would be pretty much it. After that, the ratepayers pay everything. This program belongs to the entity, your city in this case, right, and your ratepayers. They pay their PG, their bill, their PG, it is a PG&E bill, but we would be on there as the generation line item and that's where the money comes from. And then, the money that is paid by your ratepayers would come back to, for you to be able to work on initiating programs that you choose.
That's it for now, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yeah, one other question. If you get a majority of cities within the county of Merced to join your organization and become a part of your JPA, any city that's not in it at that particular time, is it, how does it work? Are you going to be required to come into it since it's a joint powers authority?
No.
No, it's just each jurisdiction would make their own decision as to whether or not they wanted to be a part of it. So, you know, it could be that Los Banos is the only jurisdiction in Merced County that decides they want to be part of a CCA. You could be the only city that decides not to. So it's really, you know, it's up to each jurisdiction as to what they want to do. So some other, other CCAs have been expanding into other areas. I might give some examples. So Monterey Bay Community Power covers Santa Cruz County, San Benito and Monterey Bay, Monterey County. They have recently expanded and added the county and cities in San Luis Obispo and they're in the process of expanding down to Santa Barbara County. So that's, that's an example of one CCA that's expanding. Marin Clean Energy started only in Marin County. They have added Napa County, Solano County and Contra Costa County to the area that they're serving. Sonoma Clean Power started just in Sonoma County, they added Mendocino County. So there's just, there's some history of CCAs that have started who then for, you you know, either because of adjacency, or because of certain relationships, or because of power projects in those counties, they have, um, moved and, and brought in other communities into their JPA, so.
So, for San Mateo, right now, each, each city has joined, the, the ones that have joined with you.
Everyone.
Do they have their own separate agreement? Or at some point, does this JPA thing kinda like encompass and takes over for all the cities and it dictates what all the cities are gonna pay?
For San Mateo County, um, every city, everyone joined at the same time. So there's twenty cities plus the county, so all twenty cities in the county voted back in early 2016 to be a part of this joint powers agency. And actually, each city was unanimous in their, in their vote to join. And so, in that decision, because, because those cities and towns are fairly similar, and they also cooperate in lots of other JPAs, they have their library, they have, what, what else do you guys do? Garbage, they have, uh, I don't know what else you do, but, I just focus on the energy. So they already have a lot of existing relationships, um, for joint powers agencies for, for different things. So they're, they're used to working together. For, for Merced County, um, and the entities here, the way we have kind of envisioned it is it would be, even though it would be a part, if, if you join our JPA, we would treat Merced County separately, because your priorities are different than the priorities in San Mateo County.
Or a city separately.
Or your city separately.
Yeah.
Um, yes, I know there's some sensitivity about that. So that any.
That was the point that I was trying to get to. I, I only use San Mateo as an example.
Yes.
You know, things are totally different in Merced County.
Right.
But once, you know, if, if the cities decide to do this JPA, what I wanna know is, does each city stand on its own JPA contract? Or does it become like this conglomerate thing within the county? That the, it's, it's like one county contract?
You can do it either way. And actually, the feasibility study would look into the different governance options. So you could join an existing CCA, like, um, you know, San Luis Obispo has with, with Monterey Bay. You could be your own city and form your own, you could be a, you could form a, um, CCA and have it be a department of your city, um, which other cities have done. For example, San Jose has done that, but they're a really large city. For a city of your size, it's probably not the best thing to do, because it would really tax your, um, your city staff. There are other cities in Southern California that have joined up with another organization called California Choice, where they kind of are independent, but, but, um, another entity does all their power procurement for them. So that's another option, is that you could kind of be your own juris, your own CCA, but contract out some of the back office work, some of the power procurement, but be the face of the community choice energy program for you. So all of those things would be kind of spelled out more directly in the feasibility study, and, you know, we can certainly provide you with more information about all of the different models that are out there.
So, so I guess, I, I think, let me, let me kinda interpret this a little bit. So, what earned in Los Banos can stay in Los Banos?
That's right.
All right.
And you can decide how to use it.
All right, okay.
And then the governance of it, there's a lot, a lot of different models for how you do the governance, so.
Okay.
And we can, we can provide you more information on that.
So the, the action, not action, but the direction tonight, if any, is to allow our city staff to investigate and to investigate, uh, other sources of energy if we wish to go to an alternative source. Oh, one question. It, the, the transmission of the energy, is the further away from the source, is it more expensive?
That's an exchange.
Is, no? Doesn't make any difference if you transmit a thousand miles or five miles?
Um, it depends, so, um, we can get into a complex discussion about how the energy grid in California works, but basically, you don't wanna know, but.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just asking.
But the closer it is, there, there might be some costs for transmitting the power from one place to another. So if you're buying the power from Southern California, bringing it to Northern California, there may be some additional costs for just that transmission, depending on how many other, uh, energy projects are also trying to put their power across the line.
Closer to the source, the better?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's all I wanna know. That, that's all I wanna know. All right, so the, so the, the direction, if any, tonight would be for city staff to investigate, uh, Peninsula Clean Energy and other sources, if needed, determined by staff, uh, that could be brought, if any competition, if it would, uh, if, if it would, if it would benefit the city of Los Banos, and then bring a decision back to us for, or a recommendation back to us, uh, as to how to move forward, if any. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Okay, Mr. Freya?
If that was a motion, Mayor, I'll second it.
Okay, you don't ask me to repeat it.
I won't.
Okay.
I can't.
Okay, all right, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, uh, just a point of order before I make the, the second. Um, do we have to put pressure on our staff to do this within a month or two? Is it that urgent that we need to do?
Said November.
I mean, that's still a couple of months.
Yeah.
Cause we have so many other urgent things that we need to do. I, I just don't know whether or not this would be top priority.
Alex?
Let, let us take a look at, look at the workload. That is absolutely one of the considerations. I do appreciate you recognizing that. So let us look at the workload and we'll, we'll figure out the best time to do that, given the other priorities. Thank you, council member.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Freya, second by Lewis, uh, to bring a recommendation at a, uh, not a date specific, uh, to the council as to which way we should proceed with either energy company or direction as to how we should go. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to item nine, public hearing. If you challenge proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or written correspondence to the, delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item nine A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of the city's cost allocation plan and comprehensive user fee study and adoption of a comprehensive fee schedule establishing the, and amending certain service and development-related fees for city services. Item nine A one, City Council Resolution Number six one three one, adopting the city's cost allocation plan and the citywide comprehension, comprehensive user fee study, adopting a comprehensive fee schedule establishing and amending certain service and development-related fees for service. And this is, uh, an action item, and we're gonna go to Director Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Back in March of two thousand and eighteen, the city contracted with Wilden Financial Services to perform both a cost allocation plan and a user fee study. So tonight, to get us started, um, Tony Thrasher, the senior project manager with Wilden Financial Services, is here to present that study to you. And when he is done, we'll be, his staff will be happy, and Tony, to answer any questions that you may have. And Mayor, he does have a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening, so, I am Tony Thrasher with Wilden Financial. We've been working with, uh, your staff for quite a while on the cost allocation plan and user fee study. Um, so, just kinda to dive right in, a little background, um, for those who don't know and, um, for your public, uh, what are user fees, right? Uh, what are we actually looking at here as part of this study? Uh, user fees are, think of as services or programs that are provided to the community, right, and they are typically private benefit with little to no, uh, community benefit, right? Uh, so we're looking at conveyance of cost and effort of the city onto, you know, your community as a private benefit through, you know, uh, permits, uh, or, you know, through, eh, kinda think of anything else where there's kind of a, more of a one-to-one relationship, uh, between the staff and the community itself. State law requires that the use of the services be voluntary. Uh, that voluntary means either they can, it's, in essence saying that these aren't taxes. So if they're doing an addition onto their house, because there is code involvement, then they are then requiring permits and, and such kind of inspections to make sure that they're in code. So it is still a voluntary action, right? Uh, the other part of that is that the city determine a reasonable full cost of providing the services. And the reason why you determine that reasonable full cost is it provides for a maximum that, uh, you can charge, right? So there is no profiting, it is merely cost recovery. So the study itself, its primary objective is to determine what that full cost is on a fee-by-fee basis, as much as we can. So we do look at programs of, say, a total cost of a program divided by the number of participants, uh, when we need to, but we'd like to calculate each and every service based off of how it provides that service on a one-to-one ratio. And we use that using fully burdened hourly rates, think of the salaries and benefits of staff, as well as incorporating departmental overheads, supplies, you know, pencils, paper, uh, electricity, right? As well as the indirect overhead of support structures of the city. So human resources, finance, uh, city clerk, right? Those sorts of things, they provide support to the operating departments, who then provide service to the community. So there is a, that's what the cost allocation plan is, is determining what that support, uh, mechanism is and how that, those allocations should flow. Up to a hundred percent of the costs, as mentioned, can be recovered. Uh, there is no city that recovers a hundred percent of their costs through, uh, user fees. Uh, often it's just not feasible, and a lot of times it's not desirable, especially if we're talking about, say, community, uh, events, or, uh, recreation, or rentals, that sort of thing. Uh, so, but, the determination of what your cost recovery is, is unique to each and every city, based off your circumstances and your cost levels and where things lie. So the individual pieces of the study are, as I mentioned, develop a full cost for each and every service, understand what those costs are and how they play into your, your operations, as well as in providing the services, and your fee structure in general. Uh, so your fee structure is also unique to your city, it's nothing that we provide. Uh, it needs to be able to provide service to your community in a way that they understand, staff understands, and it makes sense, right? You have current fees in place, and so we, we need to understand what those current subsidies are and how they play into bringing a recommendation for fees, uh, here tonight, right? So the report that you have in your, in your packet has recommended fees that we've looked at, staff looked at, um, they're considered reasonable as, in terms of what your costs are, where you're coming from, from current fees, as well as what we typically see out there in industry. You are, uh, I'd say reasonable, but low cost in what your services provide. So if we're looking at, say, billing services, your fees are quite low compared to others, right? Um, but it is all a matter of where you wanna go, right? And, and how much cost recovery you want to see. So, when we're looking at the fees and, and those structures therein, we talk to your staff about how that service is being provided, who's involved, and we use those fully burdened hourly rates along with time. So how long does it take to typically provide service, uh, to an applicant, right? And we try to account for, you know, eighty to ninety percent of all occurrences. There's always gonna be some permutations that are out of that range, and there are mechanisms that, that staff has at their, at their hands in order to account for those. Things like, uh, if you get a service request that is above and beyond what the listed service is, it's recommended to let the applicant know, and you can use the fully burdened hourly rates in that report to charge for services, right? Up to, uh, fully burdened hourly rates. The, we use an Excel-based model, there is no proprietary software. Uh, it's easily, it's easy to update, easy to change, add fees, remove fees, and do any other kinda changes that you'd like to see. So, uh, kind of, in the years to come, you can add, remove services, adjust times, adjust costs therein, and it will automatically update the fee schedule itself. Now, ultimately, I mentioned the primary goal is determining what those full costs of services are, that is to make sure that you're in compliance with state law. So Prop is, uh, Prop twenty-six, Prop two eighteen, the state statute, all those sorts of things. We wanna make sure we're in compliance, and then we talk about the policy level. So, these kinds of studies include pretty much every department of the city. So what we have up here, uh, we, uh, will point out, uh, airport, while you see the fees in there, we did not do an analysis on those, it simply is a part of your master fee schedule, so it is included in the report itself. Uh, but public works, administration fees, police, community development, building, fire, recreation, right? You, and, uh, you kinda get that point, right? These types of studies require a lot of data, a lot of staff impact. So use of budgets, expenditure, cost data, salaries and benefits, talking about, uh, staffing structure. So where the full-time equivalents lie between, uh, your, your staff among departments and funds. Talk about billable hours, productive hours. Um, so there's two thousand and eighty workable hours in a year, but there's holidays, vacations, sick pay. So, those are baked into their benefits, so we get to a, our productive hour total to account for when they're actually on the job and working, right? And then we use those to calculate fully burdened hourly rates and attach those to time estimates, and how long it takes each staff involved on a service, right? Uh, these types of studies, I have a, a finance economic background, I have no idea what planners are really supposed to be doing. So we heavily rely on your staff to tell us what it takes to provide those services. And so I wanna thank staff for all the effort, cause, uh, by the end, they're kinda pulling their hair out and they hate us, uh, but it, it really does take a lot to make sure that the cities take ownership over their own schedule and over their own fees, right? So the steps of the study, it's really building those cost layers, taking the expenditure data, uh, taking the cost allocation plan, those time estimates, and that's the way we can build up those cost layers for direct, indirect support, as well as the overhead pieces. Once we have a defined full cost for all services, then we talk about the policy of where you might wanna set your fees. So if there is a fee that is currently set above that full cost that was determined, that needs to go down, right? Because you can't charge more than the full cost. So anytime you see, uh, the fees going down, it is likely the case because it is, uh, it, that is because the full cost that was determined is less than what your current fee is, right? The typical fee composition, predominantly it's gonna be your salaries and benefit costs. But this is just a graphical representation, that includes other operational costs, uh, so all those other, the supplies and materials costs, as well as the central overhead, which is all the central service support, uh, functions of the city as well. Keep in mind that if a fee is listed under community development, that doesn't just mean that community development staff work on it. Either directly or indirectly, there may be time involved that, that needed to be accounted for within that fee line service. So, uh, keep in mind that, that support, as well as, uh, that the cost allocation plan also accounts for some of the indirect support. So, policy considerations. Once that full cost determined, where should you set the fees? Uh, the general standard, if there is a hundred percent private benefit being provided, you charge a hundred percent of the cost, so that taxpayers, or your general fund, or, you know, those other programs that you might wanna institute, don't have to bear the brunt of those private benefit services. So one neighbor's not paying for another neighbor's addition, right? Uh, but, as I mentioned, there is no city that is a hundred percent cost recovery. So subsidy makes a lot of sense. Uh, I'd say the predominant factor in where you set your fees is where you're coming from, and that is the biggest factor. If you want to go further, I'd recommend looking at incremental increases over the years. So kinda what you have i- here is reasonable full, it's reasonable cost recovery based off of where you're coming from, and, uh, where it, it's reasonable to kinda go to. Uh, but still encourage participation. Uh, the case I always come up with is, if it costs, the city, you know, five hundred dollars to do a water heater inspection, don't charge five hundred dollars, cause no one will do that inspection, and then you have issues with people not strapping it, and then other things happen, right? So, you want to make sure that people stay in compliance, as well as recover as much cost as reasonable. Uh, senior use services, also mentioned, you see a lot of not applicables within the fee schedule itself. Those are either, there's some of them that are taxes, which we can't touch as a part of this type of study. Others are, uh, use fees. So use of city-owned facilities, equipment, uh, those types of things under Prop twenty-six is a different kinda category, and they can be market-based. And so for those types of services, and the, the reason why they're market-based is cause they can't account for all the costs included in that, including acquisition, the building, uh, you know, repair, maintenance, upgrade, all that sort of thing. We're just looking at operational costs, right? And even then, your community, your, your recreation, community services, they're not going to be cost-recoverable, and it's not something you typically search for, seek to do anyway. We do recommend that on off-years where you don't do, uh, say, a full study like this, you would include a CPI or other cost factor to increase your fees as part of, say, your budgetary process, so you adjust your revenues as you adjust your expenditures, to make sure that you keep, keep on track, and you don't have to have jump increases on, on those years where you do do the study itself. I mentioned that the, the fees are within the report itself, they don't lend to a, a presentation itself, um, but I am here to answer any questions you have about the methodology scope, any, anything that you, uh, might have, just please, go ahead and ask. Uh, staff's also here to answer any questions about how procedures or, you know, the services that are part of this thing.
Lewis?
Oh, well, that light was before, but I do have a. Okay, so. Okay, so, um, you talked about, were you suggesting that? Okay, so you talked about, were you suggesting that increases be annually or like every two years or what? Because I'm thinking, you know, as, as we negotiate with staff and, and there are increases in salary on an annual basis. CPI, you know, I'm not sure when that increases, but this is put on a scale where it could easily be changed. Is that something that you're recommending that our staff do based on, on, you know, the salary of the staff of the department that provides a particular service? Where there may be cost recovery that could be more in total rather than partial because it's not something that you would recommend?
So there's, there's always a balance of how much impact on staff to kind of update these kind of things. So I'd say most cities do a CPI increase and then every four to five years you do another study to fully look at it. We do have some clients that take the model and update the salaries and benefits and cost information every year. That is a little more staff-intensive or, you know, we, we can do that too for you and just update that information and roll it forward. So it's kind of as, and then there's the ultimate, which is you just do the study every year. I do not recommend that. Your staff would, that, they probably, right now, I could film on the back of my hair. But, you know, so there's different levels to how you want to go about that. If you haven't established say MOU or, or something where you know what your staff is going to be increasing the cost each year, then that is the best way to increase it on the off-years because it, it's a good reflection of where your costs are going. But yeah, you can update the salaries and benefits in the tool itself just to do that every year.
So i- is there some way that maybe each department can look at the services that they're providing and make a determination that it's?
I can answer that. So part, part of consulting with Wildin is they did create a model for us that he said, Tony stated it was Excel-based. So city staff or finance staff will go in there on an annual basis like he's referring to. We'll take our budget information and we'll update it. We did not build in automatic increases into the resolution if this is adopted tonight. But it does state in here that we will bring it back to city council on an annual basis. So it is something that finance staff will be looking at annually. We'll also take a look at are these, part of the, the project was, do we really utilize these fees? Is there something, are there three people doing it or are there 15 people doing it? If there's three people doing it, do we really need it? So we'll take department consideration into that as well, and this will be part of the budget process.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone who wishes to speak on city council resolution number 6131? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Any other questions from council? Do I have a motion? Oh, sure. Did you press it? Yeah, it didn't show. There we go.
Okay.
All right.
Just a real quick comment. I, just for me, I am, I want to make sure that we're not scaring anyone away from our recreation. And I completely understand that needing to stay, stay with the CPI and inflation and whatnot. I definitely understand that, but I don't want to scare anyone away from using our facilities. Because in my mind, I envision if we're not allowing, for costs, for charging too high for people to use facilities, then they're having these events at their homes, which in further gets noise complaints and that calls out our police or something along those lines. So I, I just want to say for myself, I do have a fear that if we are to raise rates, I do want to keep in mind that we should be cautious of that there. And that's just kind of all I wanted to say tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city council approve resolution number 6131 as read by title.
Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Lewis, second by Jones to approve city council resolution number 6131. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, we've been at this an hour and 42 minutes. We're going to take about a five-minute break and we'll be back in five minutes. Okay, if we could all sit down, please? All right. Be that way. Okay. We've returned from our five-minute break and we're on item 10, agenda item 10, solid waste contract and organics diversion update. Mr. Fajian?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Tonight, we're going to have Mr. Garth Schultz of R3 Consulting Group. It's the consulting group that we hired to assist us in the selection of a contractor for the disposal services for the solid waste. He'll be giving a presentation tonight basically going over the timing to prepare the RFP for the solid waste collection, the selection process, and how that process will deal with the organic food waste diversion issue. So Garth?
Hey, welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, staff, members of the public. Again, I am Garth Schultz with R3 Consulting Group. We're a small solid waste consulting firm that works exclusively through municipal agencies like the City of Los Banos. We don't work for private haulers. We don't work for Republic or any of the competitors. We work to serve your interests and your ratepayers' interests in matters such as procurement of a new services contract. And I have the clicker here, the presentation.
We have PowerPoint?
We should have a PowerPoint somewhere.
Let me press this here. Okay.
Fantastic. Tonight, it's an informational update just to give you a snapshot of upcoming actions and activities with respect to your solid waste contracting options and pathways forward for meeting state directives for organic waste diversion and recovery. This is just an informational item so that you have a sense of what's coming up and just to start to give a bit of a primer education to the council on matters around your solid waste contracting. Please, if you have questions, interrupt me during the presentation. I'm here at your disposal. No pun intended. In terms of what we'll cover tonight, really what we're doing is, is giving you a sense of what's coming up with your solid waste franchise or franchise. The, the fact that you do have a need to secure for solid waste franchise in the future. Cover a bit of the, the state directives and unfunded mandates around solid waste diversion. Give you a bit of a briefing of one of the new primary laws that is driving a lot of action in the solid waste industry and field. And give you a bit of a heads-up of what may be coming down the pike from the Merced County Regional Waste Management Authority that could benefit the city in those efforts overall. Now, as a matter of recap, as you're likely aware, you have a franchise agreement with Republic Services, a number of staff who are in the room. And that's for the exclusive right to collect garbage, recycling, and green waste within the community. Ensure that it's collected for the intention of public health and safety, meeting state laws. And then getting those materials to their proper end destination, whether that be a landfill or a recycling facility or a composting facility. It includes other services as listed here. You can see what those are. Essentially, the position that you're in is you've had a contract for some time. There were extension opportunities contemplated in that contract. Those have been used and therefore exhausted, meaning that at this point in time, the contract is set to expire June 30th, 2021. Given that need or given the expiration in June 20th, June 30th, 2021, the city is in the position to need to procure for new services for solid waste recycling, organics, composting, starting July 1, 2021. And the, the current prior, or plan is to go out to a competitive RFP process for those services. When the city moves forward with that competitive RFP process, which we're engaged to assist you in, and I discuss the timing in just a moment, you will have a need to secure commercial and organics recovery, meaning food scraps, food soil paper, and other organic materials that are defined under state law. And also begin to collect organics such as food scraps and food soil paper from residents as well. And I can talk a little bit more in a few moments about what that looks like. In terms of the timeline for procurement, our current timeline is to get started on an RFP packet, meaning all the information that potential proposers would need in order to put together a competent and complete and competitive proposal to the city. That'll begin at the end of this calendar year, along with the drafting of a potential service agreement that would accompany it so that proposers have an idea of what the terms and conditions are that the city would insist on. Coming up in the beginning of 2020, that RFP would be released to potential proposers. We know there's a number of them within Merced County that may have interest in this item. And then as the, we get into the latter, the first half of 2020, we'd be in the position, working with your staff, and of course, ultimately bringing a recommendation to the council on a negotiated recommended award. With the intention of providing around a 12-month window for a potential, potential transition to a new service provider. That's generally recommended. If there is a service provider other than the incumbent that's selected, they would need sufficient time to procure vehicles, procure containers, conduct outreach, and set up their system here within the community. So that year-long window is critical in terms of being able to provide a competitive playing field wherein you could have new providers come in should that... playing field wherein you could have new providers come in, should that be the direction of the council. Switching gears momentarily, solid waste collection services are mandated under state law. You have a responsibility to provide for the health and welfare and ensure that there's not accumulation on properties. This is under the California Code of Regulations. But within that, there are also increasing state mandates around diverting waste from landfill to recycling or composting or other end uses. I'll cover briefly what they are, but it started in 1989 with AB 939, which required a 50% diversion of recoverable materials, or the landfill materials away from landfills that started our recycling trends here in California. And then, over the last several years, more and more mandates keep cropping up. We have AB 341, which requires commercial and multifamily entities across the state to participate in recycling, and then AB 1826, which requires them to participate in organics materials recycling, such as food scraps and food soil papers. There's a number of obligations placed on cities throughout the state with respect to those laws, in terms of conducting notification to folks who are covered by the law, annual monitoring, outreach, and education, and providing those programs. Other laws, such as AB 1594, I'll just skip over for now, but it's just placing more requirements on you. The big one, the real concern within the solid waste community right now, that the entire state is gearing up to address, is SB 1383, also known as the short-lived climate pollution law. This has a target of reducing organics going to landfill by extreme margins over the course of the next five years. This includes things like common green waste that most of your residents will have access to through their green bin, but it also includes food scraps, food soil papers, and it has requirements for recovery of edible food, for examples. So, this is a heavy lift. It's a part of what you're poised to position yourselves to be in compliance with as you move forward with this competitive procurement process. One item to note here is that the Merced County Regional Waste Management Authority, of which you are a member, is moving forward potentially. They have an item coming up on their agenda tomorrow evening on the governing board to establish compliance pathways for all of the members around how do you meet the expectations of SB 1383, what are the roles and responsibilities of the authority, of the individual members, and what might your hauler be in a position to assist you with with respect to that law. Now, in terms of the implementation timeframe for SB 1383, this is taken from a slide developed by the state, gives you a sense of when the regulations were adopted and when they take effect, but it's a fair amount over a short timeframe. And really, the key date that you would need to work towards is that January 1, 2022, that's when the state considers the regulations to be in effect, and at which time, agencies would need to be able to demonstrate their ability to be in compliance, because CalRecycle will begin enforcement at that time. So, a part of what we're working with you on right now is to establish that compliance pathway, and that's one of the reasons we're here with you tonight, is just to understand that this is coming, and it does mean some changes in the types of services that you'll be arranging for via your new collection contract, whether that's awarded to the incumbent or to another service provider via the competitive RFP process. Now, as I mentioned, the Merced County Regional Waste Management Authority is contemplating an action that would, and this is on their agenda for the tomorrow evening, a scope of work with a consulting firm, not ours, that would help figure out what's that pathway look like on an agency-wide level, on an individual member-agency level, and also looking at what are some of the regional facility-type infrastructure solutions that could help facilitate broader compliance. As an example, there are a couple composting facilities operated by the authority here within the county. Those composting facilities do accept green material, green waste, yard waste for composting, but aren't presently in a position to take food scraps and food soil paper, along with those materials. And the food scraps and food soil paper is what the state unfunded mandates are directing agencies to secure services around. So, this is the snapshot of what the scope of work is that has been put forward before the authority, and it will be voted on tomorrow evening. And if awarded, if that contract is awarded, there will be an effort through June 2020 to identify what are those individual compliance pathways, and that's something that can be leveraged here in Los Banos as well, and it will also inform the competitive RFP procurement process that we'll be developing with you. Now, you're in a fairly strong position here within the county. You're one of the only agencies that provides recycling programs currently. You're one of the only ones providing a green waste program to your residents and to your multifamily dwellings. So, you are leading the way here in Merced County. You don't have a lot to do in terms of keeping up with the state laws, other than keeping up with the state laws. There is a barrier to overcome, which I mentioned, which is the fact that the regional composting facilities currently don't take the food scraps and food soil paper. That is an impediment, and it's also a potential cost impediment, which I think we're all hoping can be resolved at the authority level through potential adoption of the agreement that they'll be considering tomorrow.
So, let me ask you.
Yes.
Since, and this came up a few months ago, when there was an attempt to raise the rates of those municipalities that are doing the right thing. And so, that was, thank goodness, thank God, it was scrapped, so that was nice. But are all the facilities, or all the different entities now, the cities within the county, going to be required to do this?
Everyone in the state's going to be required to do this. That is correct. So, everyone in the state is in the position of both providing the organics collection programs that include food and food soil paper to residents and businesses and multifamily dwellings.
What about green waste and also recyclable?
Recyclables is not the subject of SB 1383, although paper is considered to be an organic material which needs to be removed from landfill under the SB 1383 expectations. So, this really does focus on organics, and that includes the yard waste. So, this will apply to everyone.
Okay.
Everyone's in the position of having to demonstrate a compliance plan, and then showing forward movement towards compliance by 2022, or else face potential monetary penalties.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So, overall, for Los Banos, achieving greater amounts of organics diversion is the next step. That's driven by the state directives, and you're in a position and are currently working with CalRecycle to achieve those aims, and you're in a position to have the benefit of Merced County Regional Waste Management Authority's efforts that you can leverage for your own processes, cost-effectively, and in the timeframe that you need in order to have it be effective for your procurement of a new contract. In terms of next steps, this is what's happening. We're working now with your city staff to establish an implementation plan for AB 1826. It's one of those bills I mentioned on the prior slide, which is the mandatory commercial organics recycling program. That is something we're moving forward on now, and you'll have a fully enacted compliance plan by the end of this year. We've mentioned, I've mentioned a few times now, that Merced County Regional Waste Management Authority's planning, and when that timeframe would take place. And of course, then, the final step would be the drafting and issuance of an RFP, review and evaluation of proposals, negotiation with more and more potential proposers for a contract here, and then we would be bringing that forward to you for consideration and potential adoption around June or July of 2020, allowing for that approximate one-year transition timeframe to your new contract effective July 1, 2021. Fast and to the point, trying to be respectful of time, but if you do have any questions, we're here. Ultimately, just want to make sure you have a sense of what's coming down the pike, because change is afoot.
Questions? Mr. Freya.
I know citizens are going to ask, are we going to have one more container for organics, or are they going to be combined into the green?
The, that is subject to council direction at this point. The hope would be that it would be combined in the green. That is typically the best practice. It doesn't mean an additional container, but that does mean that that material that would go into the green container, as of right now, couldn't be composted here in Merced County. It would have to be trucked out of county, and that could be at somewhat high expense. So, if you can get food scraps and food soil papers included in the composting stream at your local composting facilities, that's the best potential outcome.
And that all, that would all be the green?
Correct. That's correct. It would go into the green.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you for the time.
Okay. Thank you. Sonya, anything to add?
I have to go to work.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Mark. I'm sorry. I keep, every time I think of this, I think of money, and I just look at you, you know?
This is a show. Every time you think of money.
I think of money. Thank you, Tom. Mark, anything else to add?
No, that was, thanks for the presentation, Garth. That was very comprehensive.
Okay.
The only other thing I will add is councilperson Lewis, we remember the small cans where that's going to be looked at. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, with that, this is just for information only, no action to be taken, so you'll be back, I know, with later updates. All right. Let's go on to the next agenda item, item 11, cancellation of the regular city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, October 16, 2019, due to council members attending the League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach, California, October 16 through 18, 2019. And this is, it's an action, action item. We need a motion and action to go forward. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the cancellation of the October 16 meeting.
Okay. And do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Lewis, second by Johnson-Santas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carried. Now, we're not going to miss the, the MCAG meeting is on the 24th, is it? So, that's been, that's not, it's usually the day after our, our next, our second council meeting, so just want to make sure that we're not missing anything. See anything on here? I thought Billy said it was the 24th or something we talked today.
Yeah, maybe it is, maybe it is the 24th.
For MCAG.
It's on your slide?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was my impression that it wasn't.
Yeah, it is. No, no, no conflict. Yeah, you're right. You're right. Okay. Let's go on to the new item 12, and that is placing MCAG 2020 RTIP on the agenda for discussion and direction to the mayor. Okay? And Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Greg, if you could bring me that. Great. Thank you very much, sir. Everybody left, so anyway. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This item was added to the council agenda this evening. It is the Pioneer Road Widening Project Inclusion in the RTIP. There's a few acronyms, so if I get too acronymed out, someone please interrupt me and, you know, stop my transit acronym-ese. So, MCAG is in the process of developing the RTIP. So, before I go too far, so what is an RTIP? The RTIP is the Regional Transportation Improvement Program. It is a component of the STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Program. So, think you have the STIP at the high level, and then the RTIP kind of funneling up into the statewide STIP program. The STIP's a five-year transportation budget adopted by the California Transportation Commission, or the CTC. It contains projects recommended for funding. Each region, like MCAG, develops an RTIP that is eventually sent off to the CTC for consideration and hopeful eventual adoption by the CTC. It's adopted every two years, and this particular STIP, or RTIP, excuse me, is due to the CTC on December 15. So, tomorrow, the MCAG Board is taking, or considering, an action to give MCAG staff direction to prepare a draft RTP. In that RTP, the recommendation, they're recommending programming carryover of some planning funds, recommending construction of Atwater-Merced Expressway Phase 1B. Let me go back a little bit. The RTIP is a critically important project for the future of Pioneer Road. So, we want to pay close attention to the development of the RTIP, and we want to continue to work very closely with MCAG staff as the RTIP process proceeds. So, going back to the board meeting tomorrow, the recommendation will include, again, construction of Atwater-Merced Expressway Phase 1B, establishment of Pioneer Road Widening Project as a priority for future RTIP and STIP program funding. What we would recommend adding, which isn't in the current recommendation, that a funding plan also be developed for the Pioneer Road Widening Project. We think it's important to have a course charted in terms of funding, so we have some idea on what the potential sources will be for construction for the project. So, we would recommend adding that as an item. So, in terms of RTIP next steps, and this is really kind of at the MCAG Board level, but there is an item here for the council. If the recommendation is approved tomorrow by the MCAG Board, the MCAG staff will prepare the draft RTIP. The draft RTIP will go to the MCAG Board for a public hearing on October 24, and, Mr. Mayor, that does not conflict with our trip to the League of Cities. So, that will allow time for council consideration of the draft RTIP. So, MCAG Board would have the public hearing, the draft RTIP would, we would have the opportunity, or the council would have the opportunity, to review that RTIP on November 6, provide comments, and provide comments on that RTIP. MCAG Board will, is looking at adopting their RTIP on the 24th of November. If they don't adopt it on the 24th, they would likely have to have a special meeting before, sometime before December 15, to make that deadline to submit that RTIP to CTC. So, that kind of outlines the process, outlines the staff recommendation that's going before the MCAG Board tomorrow. So, really, the purpose of this agenda item is to give the council the opportunity to provide some direction to the council's representative, i.e. the mayor, as the mayor will be attending that board meeting tomorrow. So, again, looking for some direction to the mayor. Staff's available for questions, and I'm guessing the mayor doubt will have some comments as well, but that does conclude the staff's presentation.
Thank you. So, my concern is that with this item, and thank you, staff, for putting this on the agenda as a special request, the concern that I have at this point is that we've been funded through Measure V for the, or through right-of-way purchase for Pioneer Road, and we've never been that close before in a project. So, we need $10 million in five years to construct this project, the first phase, and hopefully, we can find some money from Caltrans, and we can go even further than that. But it's the age-old dilemma, and Tom, you'll recognize this right away, and that is, they want to construct Atwater-Merced Expressway, which is requiring, according to them, the total STIP funds that are available right now, which includes the 2020 allocation of $30 million. And that word "future" is what bothers me on that Part C. It says "project as a priority for future RTIP STIP programming." Well, there's no guarantee that that's going to come through, and there's a good chance it will, but I'm not going to give you a guarantee tonight that that's going to come through. So, we're bringing this to you tonight to kind of give me direction of what, as a minimum or a maximum, you would accept when I go there tomorrow, and bearing in mind that what Alex said pertained to a review on October 24 of anything that they come up with. So, tomorrow's action, and Alex and Bill, please, please correct me if I'm not stating this correctly. this correctly, tomorrow's action is for the development of the funding plans without any amounts being designated.
The, that, that's correct. The, the, the action item being recommended to the MCAG board tomorrow is to direct staff to prepare the draft R-TIP. They're not, they're not, at least as we understand it, and as this, the recommendation is in their, their staff report in their agenda packet, it does not include specific dollar amounts at this point. They're, they're just providing direction to staff to develop the draft R-TIP.
So there is a possibility it could include present STIP dollars or, or future STIP dollars or both?
Correct. The draft, when the draft R-TIP is completed, it will have dollar amounts. I, I want to be clear on that, but the, the direction to the, to the MCAG staff tomorrow is, again, as we understand it, does not include dollar amounts. But these, R-TIP will include dollar amounts and a funding plan, uh, for both AME Phase 1B and as long as we can get our, our adder, uh, a, a funding plan for Pioneer Road construction as well.
So I just want to make sure because of semantics, because of wording, because of anything, that we're not outfoxed on any of this. Uh, that this project is, is a go, it's a real project and we need it here in Los Banos. The, um, AME Atwater-Merced Expressway is an economic development road. And that's all it is. It has nothing to do with public safety. Ours is public safety. And to get traffic off a 152 with 1,800 kids on that corridor. So Mr. Freya, you talk.
Uh, so to, uh, the way I'm understanding, I was just, I just called up that MCAG agenda for tomorrow. Tomorrow, they're not doing, uh, tomorrow they're going to come up with, give direction to create the R-TIP, but the funding, the money distribution will show up in the October meeting agenda. Is that what we should expect?
I'm going to say yes and ask Alex to confirm that.
I would never disagree with you, Mayor, but yes, that is, that is correct.
But I want you to if I said...
So, though what we want to do then is we want to give them direction to include money, uh, to include money in the recommendation and how much they're going to recommend.
Yeah, I just worry about that word "future."
Available funds.
Yeah. Alex?
No.
Okay. So yes, I just worry about the word "future" and I don't want to get skunked on this to say, all right, so give them, uh, give them authority to develop a funding plan. I want to see the funding plan as does everyone else and bring that to us, but I don't want a limited funding plan. I want a realistic funding plan of how we can get this thing done. And then on October 24th, this will be sunshine, and then at our November 6th meeting comes the hard decision. And that decision is what are we going to do if we don't feel it's a realistic plan? So I hope every council member understands that, that at some point we have to make a decision as to what we're willing to accept. And Mr. Freya and I are, are really leery because of the times money's been programmed to our projects and then it's been taken away.
And so the last, that, that, that big joint workshop we had at the community center a few months ago where they agreed for Measure V money, um, that is, that's a very positive indication for me that maybe, I mean, the fact that the, the MCAG is willing to, to dedicate that much money, I think, I think that the, we can go ahead and ask them, uh, to, and to include, and I would recommend that we, we ask them to include the financial breakdown, how much money we're going to get from the various sources in this. And I, I, I don't think, I'm hoping that, that goodwill that they showed at that meeting, um, and, uh, will carry through. And I, I get the sense that it will. I'm hoping, well, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't, but I think it's wise for us to be specific in the wording of the direction that, uh, I know you're worried about that word "future," um, but I would recommend that it was, it would include specific funding breakdowns of whatever would be STIP money, uh, R-TIP money or Measure V money, whatever it happens to be. And right now, the R-TIP is what they're working on and that include, that can tap into STIP money, that can also include STIP money as well. Is that correct?
Uh, R-TIP STIP?
Yes. The, the R-TIP does include.
So I would ask, that, that would be my recommendation is that you would, uh, you would make, that you would make the recommendation at the meeting to include the financial breakdown for our project because it's not listed there in their agenda.
Okay. So we're limiting what's on here and we don't want anything amended from what's, the action is in the board packet. And this is the action in the board packet of MCAG. We're, we're saying, and I'm going to let Mrs. Lewis talk, but, but, but that's what you're referring to, correct?
I'm looking at the packet for tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, Los Banos was awarded Sustainable Communities Grant. Plan will evaluate street sections, intersection, draft 2020 Measure V implementation plan, identify its funding, prepare PSR, uh, completion specific plan of project development up to the construction phase. There is also a federal earmark that will be repurposed for right-of-way. Uh, am I on the right, am I in the right place in this agenda?
If, if I might, the, the slide I have up now is, is actually taken from, from the MCAG staff report. So, um, the, the, the difference is what's in red, which, which would be at least our recommendation to, to add.
Add.
Add the funding plan for the project.
I would, I would support that recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Okay. So again, just for my clarification, tomorrow are, to get, we're going to request the funding mechanism, but are we going to stipulate the dollar amount that we want in that funding mechanism?
No, no stipulation. They're going to, they, meaning the MCAG staff, will bring back two funding plans.
Okay.
One for AME and one for Pioneer.
And at that time is when you can make your request if it's not enough of what we're asking.
We can have our review. We can have our review and then you're going to give me either the hard or the soft job of delivering the message, whether we're going to, uh, accept this or which way we're going to go.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Make no mistake, this is not, this is an uphill battle and this is going to have to be watched every second of the day. And make sure that whatever is done and this council approves it, that it comes through. So the funding plan for Pioneer Road Widening Project, uh, you know, we have to be very specific and make sure that, uh, that, uh, that's what happens. Mrs. Santos?
I just want to say briefly that I, I do agree with going with the funding, uh, adding the funding plan for Pioneer Road Widening Project. Um, but if I'm, we're in the best position possible that we can be because we are getting the money, at least to give the right-of-way. So, I mean, to be more specific with them, I get it, but, uh, for the most part, that's, that's all we need to really authorize.
Well, let me explain part B. So part B is that, that money can be reprogrammed from Measure V. If we don't have a mechanism to build this road, if the $10 million doesn't materialize, the West Side Committee can say, you have no conceivable plan to build that road, we're going to reprogram your money for the right-of-way purchase.
So depending on what the funding plan comes back, that's when?
Yes. The funding plan, we've already got assurance that we're going to get the Measure V money for right-of-way purchase. But if we don't get a real plan for that $10 million to build this road in five years, that Measure V money's going to go away. I'll guarantee you. Yes, like everything else.
Well, I think until we hear the funding plan, we can't really do much, right?
Uh, well, that's why I wanted to bring this to you at every step of the, of, of the juncture, every step of the way, we're going to do this as a five-member board. We're going to do this as a five-member board. This is not the mayor, this is the city council. Mr. Jones?
We already started on the PSR.
The PSR is program study, study review, program? Yeah. Okay. Study report. Mark is hiring a contractor. And, and have we brought that to, go ahead and, and tell them about this one?
Well, yeah. There's a process that we have to go through. First of all, we'll have to go before MCAG with a, uh, agreement to spend the money that we've been given and we'll get that to them momentarily. We'll be going out to RFP for that consulting services. By the end of the year, we'll have the RFP out there and we'll have someone on board, hopefully by January, and we'll have that agreement in place. Um, the stipulation will be on that whole RFP is that they have a year to do the PSR. But by doing it in that, in that time, it opens up a big window for them to do the engineering, which is a lot of money. So I, I don't think there'll be a problem. I've talked to several firms, they estimate 10, eight to 10 months to do it. So that's our schedule. So there's, we don't believe that we currently have, um, as large a capacity on the five engineering firms that work with us now to do this. So we'll be going out separately on this.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead and press that again.
You will be seeing all this as, as we go along. If you look into the MCAG packet this time around and you leave this item, the, I think City of Merced and County of Merced has a couple of agreements that they're bringing forth for Measure V, you'll see the same thing coming to you in the, probably in the, in the November meetings or something for both this and the trail.
All right. Thank you.
If, if I, if I might clarify, those would be Measure V funding agreements with MCAG, correct, Mark?
Yes, they would. Yes, they would.
Okay. So tomorrow, the meeting is going to be at 3:00 PM in Gustine. Any citizen that would like to attend, we'd love to have you. City council members, if you are free tomorrow and can get away, I'd love to have you come there and observe the process and speak if you, if you'd like to at the, uh, at the agenda item or the public forum. And, uh, uh, it is imperative that we have a pathway to this money. Because I'm telling you, without the pathway to this money, the rest of that money's going to disappear. Any other questions? Anyone? Okay. So tomorrow, I am going to take forth the, uh, one, two, three, four bullet points that's on screen now. Is that correct? Council? Everyone? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Jones?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
All right. Okay. I have my, my marching orders and, um, I'm just hoping that everyone stays on the up and up because we need to build this project. Okay. Any final comments, anyone? All right. Thank you so much. All right. Let's go on to item, the new, old item 12, new item 13, advisement of public notices, and there's no report tonight, is that correct, Stacy? Okay. Let's go on to item 13, the new 14, city manager report. Alex?
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Number four, number 14, which is now 15, uh, reportable, uh, report and update in Merced County Association of Governments. I think I've exhausted that one, so I don't have a report. Item 15, city council member reports. And tonight we'll start with Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much. Nothing on the report tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No report.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Lewis?
No report.
Wow. What's wrong? You guys have laryngitis here? Okay. Mr. Freya, say something.
No report.
Oh. Okay. All right. So, uh, uh, tomorrow night, there's going to be a farm-to-table dinner and, uh, I think they, they've, they've done well with the ticket sales and, uh, we got to get back here for that. So, uh, with that, I would like to go to item, uh, 16, which is the new 17. Uh, adjournment to 5:00 PM Wednesday, September 25th, 2019, uh, in the lounge at the Los Banos Community Center located 645 7th Street, Los Banos, California, conduct a joint study session with the Los Banos Planning Commission regarding the Los Banos Downtown Strategic, uh, Strategic Plan. So, um, with that, do I have a, a motion?
So moved.
Wait a minute. Go ahead and press your button here so I can get it on tape.
Mine's on.
Oh, it is? Okay. All right. Uh, do I have a second? Johnson?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Freya, second by, uh, Johnson Santos to approve, uh, the adjournment to 5:00 PM Wednesday, September 25th, Joint, uh, City Council Planning Commission Meeting, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Meeting adjourned at 9:33.